I call to order the Municipal Planning Commission, City of Fairview, regular meeting July 9th, 2013. First item on the agenda is prayer and pledge. Those who are able, please stand. Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and all that you've provided for us in it. We thank you for granting us the opportunity to be here this evening as we address the issues of our city as set before us. Please give us the wisdom and understanding so that we may arrive at answers and solutions to these issues and these be pleasing both to you and to our community. And as we adjourn, we ask that you be with each of us and guide us safely to our respective homes and families. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item is the approval of the agenda.
Is it approved?
Second. We have approval, and second, are there any comments? All those in favor? Next item is citizens' comments, and we have comments from Mr. Eric Durante.
Hello, my name is Eric Durante. I am attending this meeting as one of the last requirements for citizenship in the community, one of my final three merit badges for me to be able to make the highest rank in Boy Scouts, Eagle Scout. I thank you all for letting me attend, especially Mr. Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the approval of the minutes of the May 14th, 2013, regular meeting.
Is it approved?
Second.
We have an approval, and second, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, it's been brought to my attention that our city engineer did, in fact, attend this meeting, and we didn't have him listed as being pressed, so we didn't make that change.
We'll make that comment. Add the city engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those who disapprove? Ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of June 11th, 2013, regular meeting.
Is it approved?
Second.
We have approval, and second, any comments? All those in favor? Item 5.1, rezoning application to amend the approved master development plan for Fairview Historic Village, map 69 parcel 62, 3.54 acres, zone HOD, City of Fairview owner. Mr. LeHorn?
That recommendation was sent to the Board of Commissioners at their last meeting. They approved the city attorney to draw up that ordinance. We'll have first reading at their next meeting. That ordinance could change or to amend to put.
There's no action on our part?
No, it was just on your floor, a report back to you all what action was taken on
Item 6.1, Brandon Burke Coke subdivision, maintenance bond to cover the road sidewalks and storm drain each $45,000. Planning Commission set the bond at the June 12th, 2008 meeting. Bond expires July 1st, 2013, and there were no engineering comments on that. Mr. LeHorn, anything?
We can take all the bonds all at one time if you want to. 6.1 has been renewed. 6.2 has been released and certificate obviously given to stuff it in. 6.3 was released. The curbs had been repaired in Cowes Creek as a stipulation for that bond to be released. That bond was released, curbs have been completed. 6.4, Cowes Creek Phase 2, has been renewed.
Thank you. Item 7, old business, there is no old business, we'll move right into new business. 8.1, variance request from the commercial design review manual for Taco Bell, map 47 parcel 7.00. There are no engineering comments. Do we have a representative from Taco Bell?
Is that you?
Yeah, please just walk to him.
Sir, you have a chance representing Taco Bell?
Yes.
You're coming up to the podium, we just called your case.
So I have a motion for the variance request.
Is it approved for discussion?
Second for discussion.
Have an approval and a second. Floor is open for discussion. I would like to read from a couple of the commissioners who are not here and from staff concerning the subject. This is from the staff. Taco Bell Planning Commission. Enclosed you'll find in your packet are the color elevations of the front and one side of the proposed Taco Bell restaurant. They are asking for variances from our commercial design review manual. The variances, if given, will be substantial and would include as follows. A variance from the required 70% brick on all four sides, as the proposal is to have ephors as the main building material. Two, a variance for painted metal, which is prohibited, a prohibited building material. Number three, a variance from the required cornice work around the top of the building. And number four, the design review manual requires there be different roof heights, and by the rendering provided, I cannot tell for sure if this would meet our requirements. My recommendation is, as always, we should not give grievance of variances. We have a commercial design that has brought new life into the city and has changed the face of Fairview and has set a new standard. To give a variance in this matter, to me, would be taking a step backwards. That's from staff. From one of our commissioners, Commissioner Behan, he expresses his sorrow for not being at the meeting, he's traveling out of the country, but he, quote, he says, "Regarding Taco Bell, I am in agreement with staff. I do not believe it is in the best interest of the city to grant variances they have requested. I feel if we start granting variances such as these, we will quickly lose sight of the standards that have been established." From the chairman of the planning commission, his comments read, "First, let me say I hope Taco Bell will listen to the board as they will be very successful in Fairview. That being said, based on the articles I have read and the designs of the building, I believe this design is not appropriate for Fairview." And then he indicates to review an attached article about the designs as written in the Huffington Post. "As night falls and as late night begins, we really celebrate that light night feeling with the purple glow that comes from behind the slat wall," Robert said. "You will be able to see it from a quarter of a mile away. The building is truly going to be the best on the block. It will truly be a beacon in the night." The question that we must address is, is this the type of design that we want on Highway 100? The purple beacon that is seen from a quarter of a mile away, we have just completed lighting specifications for the computer-generated LED signs, and I think this design will warp those. Design that was presented in the package and the attachment are more in line with the buildings we have in town and satisfies the concept of planning that there is a continuous pattern of commercial building designs. I hope you will work, I hope you will preserve the work we have accomplished and not grant variances to erode the standards we have in place." And from the mayor, she's not here, but her concerns were about the lighting. I'm not overly concerned with the lighting excess, but with that said, I plan to make site visits to exact models they are presenting to see the PM illumination. Do we have any other comments?
I went and visited Taco Bell in Spring Hill, and I think that's, in my opinion, more to a design that would be desired for Fairview. I don't really like the metal and all this illumination.
It's my understanding the structure that was just recently built in Spring Hill would meet all of the Fairview city codes except for the adding of the cornice on the top of the building. Are you familiar with that?
No, I'm not.
It's an all-brick structure, and as I said, it meets all the city codes except for the cornice on the top.
Okay, well, I'm sorry I was a little bit late getting in, but I'm Harold Thompson, principal architect with Harold Thompson Architects, based in Nashville, Tennessee. And I'm the architect for this project, and I've been the architect for several Taco Bell prototypical projects throughout the years. Now, this is a new prototype that's being used throughout the country, and of course it's different. And what I have done in the interim since my client talked with staff, I have gone and I have modified the building to include masonry. So I have changed the masonry, I mean changed the ephors to masonry in virtually every situation. So I think with that, you know, we are in the process of satisfying the major tenants of your, of your 70% brick regulation.
What type of masonry?
Brick.
Brick, and we have here samples of the, of the brick that I'm using. It'd be a two-tone, in other words, it'll have a variation very similar to the, to the pictures that you have. I do have updated drawings that show, that shows a rift of brick, and I'd like to give that to you at this time if possible.
Does the brick go from surface all the way to the roof?
Yes, it does. Is it okay if I give you those images so that each of you can take a look at?
Yes, we'd like to see those. Taco Bell in Spring Hill is relatively new, so it's not an older structure, so...
Okay, is it similar in character to this, except it has brick?
Yes.
No.
No, it does not have...
Not the metal, not the metal, but it has brick from top to bottom. The cornice is the only thing that's different.
You give us a picture here, and I'll give you a picture of the Spring Hill.
It doesn't...
Are you sure?
He doesn't... That picture. Okay. I misunderstood his question. It didn't look like the one he gave us. I mean, that picture looks like the one in Spring Hill.
That's the one he gave us.
Oh, no, the one in Spring Hill doesn't look like that. I misunderstood.
I need a right side. I've got a left side elevation.
That's okay.
Yes, sir, I need a right one. Here, I've got two where... I think Sharon's got one. The Spring Hill elevation.
Tom, do you have a copy of what he just gave us?
This will all meet our guidelines except that metal, because the clue that they've got depicted here does meet our standards.
Is that a cornice, or is it just a highlight?
Yeah, if we can start with the... If we start with the right side, or let's start with the front, okay? Now, on the front elevation is where we have, we have the metal slats. We call them slats, you may call them louvers, but the metal slats. Now, behind the metal will be brick. So this is just kind of like a, like a false front in front of it, so it has the brick behind it, and then it has the stone. So it's mostly masonry except for the opening for the glass. And the metal is a, is a factory finished, it's not a painted-on metal, it's not going to flake and come off in time. It's baked on, much like the metal storefronts of the aluminum glass doors and the aluminum frames for the windows. So that is what we are hoping that you will think is, feel is satisfactory. Now, if we look at, at the rear, on that same drawing, I'm showing ephors at a certain point above the, above the ground. That's a, that's a cooler that's at, that we're enclosing back there. Now, it's necessary, we can carry the brick all the way up there, there's no problem we can do that. So as you look at the, if you look at the left side, I'm sorry, the right side elevation, and that's where the other metal louvers or metal slats occur. Also behind that metal will also be the masonry. It'll be the same color as that lighter color masonry. So basically, we are satisfying the percentage for the brick. As a matter of fact, we are more than that, we are virtually 100% masonry once we, if we make the changes to the rear. So the only thing that would stand in question would be the treatment of the metal slats or metal louvers and the lighting. And I think in doing this, we'll be satisfying Taco Bell's national image and also be, still be in line with, with the design standards of Fairview. So the only thing that we will be asking you to consider would be consider the metal louvers or slats in front of brick masonry and making some type of adjustment to be less, more subtle on the lighting behind the louvers.
Since you have brick all the way up, why put the metal on, on the face of the brick?
Because that complies with Taco Bell's national image. It's a matter of branding, and of course, as, as holding franchises for Taco Bell, we want to be faithful to the brand, and, you know, otherwise we'll be deviating from the brand-new prototype that's going up all over the country. And personally, I think that with that, I think it would be an asset to Highway 100 and to Fairview for it to appear that way, even to the point where we did not include the cornices, because I think for this type of international-style architecture, the cornices would really be out of place, and I think it would take from the, the clean, modern look of the building.
Tom, you have a comment?
So you're going, you're not going to paint the purple underneath the slats as it was on the original proposal that you submitted?
Yes, I'm making that change, and not painting it purple. I would, I would like to, I would like to use a tan color that would match with the brick behind it, but recognizing your, your need for the 70% brick, you know, we will put brick behind, behind those louvers.
The planning commission has the authority to grant the variance on, on the metal louvers, and the metal louvers and the cornice work would be the only variances that you'd be granting now, because he would be doing 70, over 70% brick on all four sides. So the two, the two things that you would be discussing would be, be the metal louvers, which the concern with painted metal is that it does flake off, but being powder-coated, it does kind of take away from, from that, and it don't fade as, as quickly or as, as much as it is if it's just painted on there. Powder-coated is a better application of that, so... And the ephors on the backside of the building, it's, it's above five foot of grade, which is a requirement if you use ephors, so it would be in performance with our design standards. The cornices and painted metal, if you want, want to allow both of those, that would be two variances that you would be, be granting.
I believe Mr. Thompson said that he'd put brick on the backside of the building all the way up. Did you say that earlier?
Yeah, I said if, if I needed to, we would be willing to do that. But if, of course, it would be better if we, for us from a construction standpoint, because as I mentioned, most of what in the back, what occurs in the back is a, is a cooler that we are enclosing, I mean, we're actually fabricating the cooler ourselves and putting a brick enclosure to, to, to make it look like the rest of the building. But if I can only take that up to nine feet and take ephors above that, then that would be great.
But if you had brick all the way up, then you, you've just eliminated a maintenance problem of painting the ephors every so many years.
I can, I can discuss that with my client, and right now, I'm pretty sure that he may react positive, positively to that.
Is, is this similar to the type of background lighting and everything, the, the look of the building at night? Does that...
Yes, that's similar.
So it'll be illuminated from behind the metal slats?
Yes.
And it'll just, is that neon? Is it, what color is that?
It's LED. In the prototype, it appears purple because of the, of the purple ephors.
Okay, but you're saying since it's brick, it'll be more of just like a halogen, bright light?
It'll be more of a warmer look to it, you know, of course, the lighting is LED lighting, but we can control that, and if the purple is really objectionable, then it'll have a warmer, have a warmer glow to it.
Yeah, the purple kind of reminds me of when I used to live in Miami in South Beach, Ardeco, and I don't know if that's really what I see in, in Fairview, but just kind of curious on that.
Right.
I think probably the, with the comments going off of that, I think, you know, the building by itself is a very nice building. It would be more of what I like, contemporary, modern style. But for the overall view, you know, this building, for instance, you know, this is kind of a symbol of maybe a neo-traditional-type community, city that we're trying to build. And for me, that would be my only hesitation on approving this, is that, you know, I, I don't really, I wouldn't want to see every building to look like this, and therefore I don't know if this is going to be the odd man out, so to speak. So that's kind of just my thoughts on it.
Well, you know, in speaking about architecture, I know Fairview has its own standards, and you have a right to that, but in looking at architecture in general, I think we found a richness in architecture is really based upon some of its characteristics be a symbol of the period and the style in which they were created. So that's, that's why if you go to Europe, you know, you can look at the older buildings and you can appreciate it, because you realize at the, at the times they were built, because they represent the technology, they represent the character that occurred at that time. And you can even look at, at how the architecture has changed, and we consider that to be classical. Well, as we look at modern America, we look at cities like Fairview, we look at Franklin, look at Brentwood, Germantown, Tennessee, that, that holds to a rigid standard like this, well, you find as you explore there that there are many, many various types of architecture that occur there, and some of those pieces of architecture represent the technology and the character and the spirit and the art that occurs at this point in time. So I think that, this is just a general architectural statement, I think that the richness of any period of architecture can be explored through the artifacts and the buildings that were created during that period. And I think to have a building such as this, it's, it creates a richness that everything is not the same, everything has its own expression, but yet, with the changes that we are willing to make, I think it still falls into the overall character of what you're looking for. It's just not like every other classical building with all brick and cornices. It, it gives you that richness as you pan through all of the realm of architecture for your city. So I, I think from that standpoint, it would be an asset. So I, I, I think from that standpoint, it would be an asset.
City, city engineer, Mr. Owen, do you, uh, have any comments? With this new proposal?
Uh, certainly not from an engineering standpoint, so anything beyond that would be my, my own opinion, and, and that's what, uh, you guys are up there to do, is, is you know your community better than I do, so I, I trust that you would make the proper decisions on, uh, how you would like the aesthetics of this particular structure to look.
Do we have any more questions from the commissioners?
I wish I could get a feel for what the lights were going to do with the brick behind instead of it being that purple glow now.
It's just not going to be visible, the brick's not going to be visible at all.
Right.
No, the brick won't be visible, but it will affect how the, how the light shows.
It'd be a couple inch gap, but not really?
Yeah, it'll be a gap between, what happens with that, uh, like in the, in the first photograph that you saw, they had the night view with the lights and the purple? Yeah, yeah, it only looks purple because of the, of the, of the purple ephes that's behind it. So if you have a, a warm, a tan, you have a tan brick behind it, and you have a, uh, LED light of low voltage, then it's going to pick up the character of the brick that's behind it as far as the color. So it's going to be more of a warmer glow that comes out of it instead of that cold avant-garde purple look.
Are y'all aware of the limitations of the LED lighting that the city has in Fairview?
Uh, no, not in detail.
Well, the, those lighting only, uh, apply to the digital, computerized, uh, sign, media sign. It didn't take into consideration lighting on, on a building. Now, the design standards, um, the lighting requirements for it just says that you can't exceed one candle light at, at the property line, and that you can't encroach light onto the next property from, from your property, so that's mostly dealing with parking lot lights and things of that nature. And if this illuminates beyond the property line, then that could be a concern.
I don't think it would cast anything beyond the property line. Of course, it will be visible, but it should not cast any, any rays beyond that, ambient light beyond that.
It's still going to be colored LEDs, correct?
No.
It's just going to be a white LED?
Just be a white, or it'd be a warm white LED.
So Don, what was the, the variances again that we would have to issue?
Uh, the variance would be on the painted metal slats, uh, and the, uh, cornice.
Will you do both at one time or one at a time?
You can do it all in one motion.
I don't have a problem with the paint on there, which, like you said, is powdered. It's not, there'd be a problem with it. The cornices, going a little bit more detail, but the property with those, other than the variances. The code that we have in place now for that?
It just requires that, that you provide, uh, cornice around, around the tops of the building, and that's just to create an architectural style. The way our design standards are, are, was developed was to create different, um, depths and things of that nature by using, uh, different building materials and, and things of that nature. And to create the cornice work kind of offsets the building and creates a, a depth there from the top of the building. And that's the way the design standards were, were created, to create just a certain architectural style and, and look for, for Fairview's.
So Thompson, what would be the general effect if we, if you add the cornices?
Well, uh, uh, they would be out of character with the building. I'd, I'd say that, uh...
But they would be in, in compliance with what we're requiring for everyone else?
Right. Well, what, what we have, uh, is that we, we have, uh, this is incidentally, uh... This would be the color of the, uh, not the cornice, but this would be the color of the cap that occurs at the top of the building. Uh, so, uh, and, and let me say something else, too. Uh, we do have varying heights of the building. The, the stone is at one elevation, then the sides at a different elevation, and then we have a corner element on the back that's, uh, that's on the back corner, back right corner, that's at a different elevation. So we do get that play that, that you're looking for as far as moving in the heights, and we do get the play in the different planes, uh, back and forth, that gives you the shadow line, it gives you all those kinds of things that you look for. As I say, the main objection that I would have is that, uh, because of the nature of the building, even though we're putting the brick masonry on it, that the cornice, in my opinion, would be out of character with the, with the basic architecture. And I don't think that, personally, once again, I don't think that adding the cornice would give you the type of character on this building that you're actually looking for.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Yes, sir, uh, because you wouldn't be able to carry the cornice work around the most prominent parts of the building. Because of the, the slats wouldn't allow you to do the cornice work in that area, which, you know, you'd want the cornice work to be in the most prominent places of the building where it's more visible, and you couldn't do that in this, in this particular application.
Yeah, I was going to point out the Westview Plaza, um, for those that know it, the Fairview citizens, you might not know it, Harold, but, uh, it doesn't have a cornice work on it, and, uh, I think it looks great, and so, I'm, I'm not as opposed, for me personally, on that cornice work.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
If you would restate where all you're going to add the brick to this time, so it can be part of the motion, so that we'll have it part of the motion when we grant the variance?
Okay. Well, let's look at the elevation, look at the right side elevation. That anti-elevation would be brick masonry, including the area behind the slats. Okay. That's the right side elevation. Okay. Uh, the same would be true on the left side elevation. That everything you see there on that elevation would be brick masonry. It'd be two different colors of brick. Okay? And you see the, you see the stone. On the rear, on the front elevation, uh, behind the slats would be the tan-colored brick masonry. And you have the stone, and of course, you got the brick masonry underneath, underneath the windows as well. On the rear elevation, uh, if possible, we'd like to do it exactly as is shown there, which would be brick where it's shown, and that lighter color to be ephes. If it makes a big difference, we can make it all masonry, brick masonry.
I suggest all masonry.
Okay.
The, um, the back of the metal slats showing on the left side elevation and the rear elevation, is that actually white?
You said the back of the slats?
Right here. Is that on the back of your metal slats up here?
No, it's not really white. That, that is the opposite side of the building. That's the, that's, that's the part of the building that's about 100 feet away from this elevation. So to keep it from being confusing, I wanted to show it, but I didn't put any color on it because it's not in that same plane. It's the backside of the front, which is like, which is like 100 feet away.
Okay.
So it's going to be brick too, then, right? What, what color is it going to be? Is it going to be a white roof, or is it going to be?
No, it's, uh, that, that is going to be a, be a tan color. But, but you'd never see it because it's the backside of the wall. It, on a true elevation like this, you know, when you have an ortho, orthographic view, when everything is, you know...
This is just for definition of depth?
Right, yeah, definition of depth, that's all, you know.
Would that be ephes?
No, it would not be ephes.
Okay.
It would be a duralash, which is a, a single plan.
So basically, what we're asking here is to, we, we don't need a variance for the brick? I don't think we need a variance for the cornice?
And the metal.
And the metal.
And the metal. Right. I'd like to move, make a motion to approve both.
Second. We have a motion to approve this new design with the changes of all, all brick?
Does that include your brick in the?
Yeah. And it's been seconded?
With all brick, no ephes.
Do we have any further comments?
Don, do you have a comment on this?
I just want to make sure if you was going to require the 100% brick, no ephes, that, that was in the motion so we could...
All brick.
All brick, 100% brick, that's understood.
Okay, we have a motion, it's seconded. Uh, commissioners, all approved? Aye?
Aye.
Any disapprove? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on. Item 8.2, rezoning application for property located at 515 Highway 96 North from RS40 to R20, map 22, parcel 163, 1.01 acres, B and B investment owners. Do we have representatives here? There are, uh, no engineering comments on this?
Both approved?
Second. We have a, uh, motion to approve and seconded for this rezoning. Any comments?
I'd like to ask Don's comments on this. For the rezoning on this, is it going from an offshoot to a point, is that correct?
That's what the request is, yes, sir.
This is for multifamily addition. When they go in front of the house, there's approximately a little over acre there, and the house sits in the deepest part of that acre. So we have well over a half acre, three quarters of acre in front of that house, between the house and the highway.
Honestly, there's going to be a question with, uh, the sewers bar. It's probably going to hold all three units.
Uh, I don't know that there'd be any issue with water and sewer. Um, on 96, there's really no restrictions on, on sewer right now. So it shouldn't be an issue with water and sewer, um, other than they will probably be required to put in a fire hydrant.
Right, we understood that.
And do you plan to put a driveway in off of 96 to this?
Yes, sir, we hope to have a separate drive coming out of that piece of property.
Okay, you'll have to get that from T-DOT?
Have y'all considered that part of it?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
They can be difficult to work with.
Pardon me?
They can be difficult to work with.
Yes, it can.
I understand.
Right, right.
Mr. LeBorne, do you have anything to add?
No, sir, the only, the only thing that would, would hold up the, the projects is if they can't get a, uh, an additional access permit from T-DOT, because the, the easement that, that is there servicing the two duplexes in the back is all that our zoning will allow them to access from an easement. So they would not be able to build the next unit if they was getting access off that easement per our zoning. So they have to have that other entrance off of 90, off of 96 into the property to be able to build the, the, the new dwelling.
Are you aware of this condition?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are y'all planning on this being horizontal to 96 and perpendicular to 96?
Excuse me?
Are y'all planning on it to face 96, both sides?
We really haven't got that far along with, you know, plan and design.
Suggestion from the Plating Commission.
We can do it either way.
I, for a pedicure, I think if, if you do it and it's approved, it'll obviously turn out fine. Yeah, I think the front is for 96 would be better looking than the angles there.
Right.
It'd look more like three homes rather than duplexes.
I agree, I think it would look, look better that way, and that's fine.
When we bought that property several years ago, we, we were actually understanding then that it was zoned or in the, in the master plan that was done several years ago, that that was high-density housing area.
Hasn't there been, probably been a split since then?
The, it was, yes, we had, it started off as a little over two acres.
Right.
And, um, we divided it and put the original part in the back.
Right. I, I knew that there'd been a change in it since, since the job ended.
That's right.
Donna, what kind of setbacks would this create? Would it just be what our required is under the, uh, planning codes?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, I think front setback is 35 feet in R20. Uh, side setbacks are 15 foot, uh, rear's 20.
Does it matter that it's a, I know it's RS20, does it matter that it's a duplex? It doesn't?
Our, our 20 allows for duplexes.
Okay, so, so then the setbacks would be the same?
Yes.
Regardless of duplex or a single family?
Yes.
Would this be, this still be an entrance or is it going to be a road?
If they get access from the highway from T-DOT, it'll be just a driveway to that one unit.
One unit.
If, or two units, one, one, one structure.
One building, one building with two units.
If T-DOT won't give them another access point, then I can't approve a building permit for them to build the duplex because our zoning won't allow him to have another dwelling off the easement that's, that's there. So, um, the only way that he could do that is if he built a city street to get the access. So it, I mean, it, it lies in T-DOT's hands whether or not they give him another permit for, for an access.
So basically, if we approve this, it'd be with the understanding that T-DOT issues, either issues a permit or driveway access to the property, or they come back to us with, uh, plans for a public road?
Yes.
We understood that, yes.
Any other comments?
I think tonight, all we're asked to do is just to rezone.
That's right.
Rather than...
Yes. We have a motion, and it's been seconded. If there's no other comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 8.3, preliminary development plan for Phase 1 and 2 of Deer Valley Down subdivision, map 46, parcel 17, 15.17 acres, zone RS8, HUD, 25 lots, Tony Cavender owner. I've got some engineers' comments, which I will read first. Number one, the curb and gutter detail on page C-2.0 indicate the gutter will be 24 inches wide, while the language in the first note under the site data block indicates the gutter will be 12 inches wide. The required gutter width is 24. Please revise the note accordingly. Number two, the required pavement section for the proposed road is eight inches of based stone, two inches of asphalt binder, and two inches of asphalt surface cord. Please revise the proposed pavement detail on sheet C-2.0 accordingly. And the third comment is lots 2 and 3 are required to have driveway access into Deer Valley Drive per the previous approved HUD. Do I have a motion?
Can we?
Have a motion and second, any discussion? Any discussion?
Donna, any comment?
Sir, you can come back to the podium.
Do you have any comments, questions?
Most of them. We have just no comment, really. The comments that were asked to be revised, we'd be glad to revise them accordingly. We understand what you're asking for, so we have no comment. But I'm Chet Rhodes with Roads Engineering to represent Mr. Tony Cavender and his wife, Melissa, so if you have any questions.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item 8.4, discuss and/or action on recommendations from the workshop. The planning commission met at 5 o'clock this afternoon, and we had a workshop on the land use map. It was very educational for all of us, I must say. And the recommendation from that workshop to the Board of Commissioners will be to expand town center south of Highway 100 from Chester Road to Cox Pike, as shown on an existing land use map in the hands of Director LeVorn.
Do we make a motion not for, to move forward with recommendations to the board?
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
9.1, reports for discussion and information, planning and zoning codes department, Mr. LeVorn.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we just report an update on the Walmart site or on the Spool site that was approved, Phase 1. During the approval process, there wasn't any burn pits that was approved on, in Phase 1 or Phase 2 of the Spool site. And when they started the clearing, they wanted to start burning on Phase 1, on that parcel. So, I had them to resubmit some plans that showed where they wanted to utilize the property for a burn pit, sent those plans over to Will for him to review. His comment back was he didn't have a problem with the location of the burn pit, but wanted to request some more silt fence erosion control be put in place. They submitted those plans, we approved those plans, so now they are burning on that site, but with the aid of a burner blower to help in the process of burning to keep it hot and keep it going, so there's not as much smoke. And I'm sure you've been up and down the highway, and you see a little smoke back there, but not as much as you would if there was just a burn without that burner system, so just an update to let you know that we did approve that change on the plans.
Are they pretty much still on schedule for completion?
They're two months back. They were, their timeline was to get the building pad ready in April, and they just now have started pouring the footings, so they're a couple of months out. So, the turnover date to Walmart has been pushed back to October instead of September.
I think that was part of the original discussion anyway, was October 1. I think that was part of the original discussion anyway, was October 1.
City engineer, Mr. Ong?
I don't have anything.
City attorney, Mr. Cantrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of things, nothing to do with anything, but the operation of the planning commission or the legalities of it, but I think I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate Mr. Biata and Ms. Anderson on being reappointed to the planning commission. I know it's extensions of their previous terms, but congratulations or console in whichever one you deem appropriate. Look forward to working with you in the remainder of your new extended term. I certainly would be remiss if I didn't congratulate Mr. Hall on being appointed back to the planning commission. Mr. Hall is one of the two remaining people that were on any boards. I may be incorrect, but I believe it's one of the two remaining persons on any boards that the city has that was here when I came here, and certainly good to see him back, and I look forward to working, as always, with Mr. Hall. The remaining people on the planning commission didn't have to be reappointed, their terms are ongoing, and I think, as you can see, what has happened tonight with the workshop and with the type of business that you conducted tonight, the importance of the planning commission. I have said this before, I will say it again, and this is not in any way, any derogation of any other board, because they're all very important, they have very unique things that they do, some of them spill over into other boards and some of them don't, but the planning commission is the first place that something happens when it gets to the city. The state legislature recognized the importance of the planning commission when they did such things as requiring plaits can't be recorded unless it comes to the planning commission, roads can't be built unless it first comes to the planning commission, any annexation planning services has to come to the planning commission. Doesn't mean you've got to approve all of them, you can disapprove them and recommend disapproval and send them on to the board, especially in zoning and this type of thing, or you can approve them, or you can submit no recommendation at all, but you have to see them, it has to be in the minutes. And it's a pleasure to work with the planning commission, I think we have a good planning commission, I think our boards are good, all the boards we work with, some of them don't meet as often as the planning commission, but just wanted to extend my congratulations to the new members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have tonight.
Communications from the planning commission, Commissioner Mitchell?
Glad we made, seeing strides happening in Fairview, it's growing, everything's kind of going the way we want it, just look forward to the growth and keep it on track with what we're doing. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Anderson?
Well, seven years ago, I was appointed to the planning commission after submitting a request to be appointed, and I saw some exciting things going on in Fairview, and I've just been privileged to be a part of that for the last seven years, and I appreciate being reappointed for another term. I also really think it was a great decision to bring Commissioner Hall, Planning Commissioner Hall back, he's a great asset to our city and to the planning commission, I wanted to congratulate him and also Matt Biata. We have served the same amount of time, and I just think that this planning commission has been one of the best, and I just appreciate being a part of it. I do something every once in a while, and I highlight some businesses here in Fairview, so I have two to highlight tonight. One is a new Japanese steakhouse in Fairview. I mean, if you haven't been there, you've got to try it out, it's called Ishin Japanese Steakhouse. It's over where the old China King used to be, near the Food Saver. And I just have to say, it's top-notch. If you go to a Japanese steakhouse and you have them cook in front of you, it's rather expensive. This is the same situation with sushi, real sushi and everything, but it's half the price because they don't cook it in front of you, but it's the same food, it's really, really good. And the other one is the Nash Eye Care, which is located across from the Fairview Rec Center. I had a situation three weeks ago where a rock flew into my eye while I was driving my car. I lost sight completely in my left eye, and with the job that I do, that would just be devastating. I went to Dr. Nash, and within five days, after no vision at all from this injury to my eye, he had me perfect sight again, because I have 2013 vision, I don't wear glasses. And I just really want to commend him and his staff on the way they took care of me. I like to highlight businesses that I've been able to have some experience with, and I try to do that each month, so those are the two for this month, and that's all.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I'd like to thank Eric Diarte for coming tonight. He is trying to become an Eagle Scout, and I have sat on a couple of committees that have appointed a couple of Eagle Scouts in this town, and I feel that it's very pertinent that we continue to support these children. And Eric's not a child in any shape, form, or fashion, but he is a very conscientious young man, and I'd like to thank him for coming tonight. Next thing I'd like to thank is all these kind words that you keep saying about him, and I just want to continue to be a planning commissioner. And I appreciate the confidence that people are showing in me, but I also would like to thank Ms. Marcia Elliott. She sent me a very nice email, and I hate it that I had to be the one to take her seat, but thank you, Marcia, and thank you, board.
Mr. Sutton?
I'd like to tell the new members, the returning members, Wayne Hall, all three of you, I'm excited to have everybody back, because it keeps the thought structure going that we've been able to build and maintain over the last several years, with having some of the same members back, and with Wayne coming back, I really think it's, he was an asset before, and he will continue to be an asset in the future. I would also like to recommend Eric, I'm not going to try to mess your last name up, so I'll just say Eric. I know it's not easy to become an Eagle Scout. It takes a great deal of work and desire and fortitude to continue to do what you're doing, especially by your age. There's been, there's not that many Eagle Scouts. A lot of them have dissented on to, I think we've had a few presidents that have been Eagle Scouts, a lot of senators and congressmen, so whatever you tried to, I'm sure you succeed in life if you can succeed in this right here. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Some people are just here to listen, and we appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
Mr. Biata?
I'd like to thank Mr. Cantrell and Ms. Anderson and everybody for their kind words. I'm very excited to be back on the, or be reappointed to the board, spend another three years up here, and take it from there, but as Mike said, very excited with how the city's been growing, and, you know, I think we've set some good guidelines in place, and as long as we hold to them, and we'll have a very nice city, so thank you very much.
Well, not to sound like a broken record, but I'd also like to offer my congratulations to Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Biata for their reappointment to the board, and to Mr. Hall for being elected to the board. We're going to do some good things in the next few years, and we need good people up here, and I think we have them. And I'd like to thank you, Eric, for addressing us, and good luck on your Eagle Scout award. With that, do I have a motion for adjournment? All in favor?
Aye.